Hard lift.
White target. The drive is not holding me at all.
Really?
I'm training.
Really?
It's about ninety-nine percent less stressful.
Oh, and the new branch.
Yeah. It smells new. So the one with all the windows.
Yeah.
And upstairs with a corner office full of windows. I really do have.
Yeah.
I've been a lot. I know I haven't seen you in many years.
Didn't have last year. Yeah. That's the one I remember.
They come out around. Just sort of receding.
If I have stuff to do, I can come from the branches.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
On when I don't actually have people training.
But I still have stuff.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Much as I want.
Really nice.
Cause you're not working.
Oh. I still have a firework tattoo.
Watching the news tonight, they were showing the farmer's market over here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm a star. Got a rain hat. Oh, sorry. When he reads the reservation, I'll be sent to it. You said no? Yeah.
Yeah, there were a long years.
A lot of times. Yeah.
You need them?
There's a lot coming, but they're not at that stage.
I wasn't quite born yet.
George, should we wait for George or go?
He hit him through the building. Yeah, so I'm sure he'll be here in a minute.
Once a month or something.
We'll have the roll call. Reagan?
Here.
Jean?
Here.
Ed?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
And Roxy?
Here.
A Stanford pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before I get to anything else, I'd just like to welcome our public tonight. And a reminder to all that this meeting is audio recorded. Is there any public comments for items not on the agenda from our public?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Please stand.
Hi.
And your name and address.
Elizabeth Love, one oh eight East Front Street.
Okay. What did you need?
Oh, well, we're already at section five?
Yeah.
That was wicked fast. I'm not even on the internet and my, all my presentation notes are available on Google Drive. So bear with me for one second. Can we table it? I've never been to one. I didn't know how it went. I thought, I thought there would be section one, two. We have a really long agenda, so. Okay, well, I've got a really good presentation written up and I'm just gonna go out of memory in my notes then. Um, so, uh, uh, I'd like to talk about, um, the Public Works Department cleaning up the walking paths where pets and humans and children play um, after they mow and weed whack. Uh, because there is fox tail and cheat grass and grass seeds everywhere. Um, I do have comments from multiple citizens, um, again, on my notes. Um, and I do have a photograph of evidence that I mailed to the mayor. Um, uh, I'm gonna try to go off memory here. So there's, I'm not coming with just a problem. I'm coming with several solutions as well. And, um, I really wish I had my notes.
Keep it, keep it coming up.
I, I don't know where the, I don't know how to get to the internet.
Well, find the city.
Yeah.
What, what I could do is talk to Public Works and when they do that, they can use a blower and blow everything off too.
Oh, see, that would be amazing.
That would, we could eliminate.
Yeah, cause I mean, it's all invasive weeds, so the, you know, weed mitigation's a problem as well.
And I do know, uh, we will be having the trails run and, and, uh, we'll try to get, get it cleaned up for that too, so. But I could talk to Public Works about that.
That'd be lovely.
Okay?
Okay.
Is that good?
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
The dog waste, uh, is a problem.
For sure.
Yeah, and I mean, I clean up.
Yep.
Up there all the time, but I sometimes don't think I should have to clean up after somebody else's dog.
No, you shouldn't.
We do put the bags out and it's, people do use them, cause I mean, I'm telling those things almost constantly, but there's just some people that seem like they refuse to clean up after their pets.
Same with fireworks.
Yeah, same with fireworks.
We know someone's dog pooped right in front of our door the other day and they walked off. What? And Crystal went and got them and made them clean. Yeah, right out in front of the city hall, on the sidewalk. But like, um,
Wow.
You know, shoes, people's shoes and socks have been ruined and there's vet bills trying to remove those seeds and stuff that are upwards to, you know, ten thousand dollars if surgeries needed, you know, but average around five hundred dollars. And the data I have is all Montana-based data.
I'm taking care of the weeds. We'll do what we can do and I'll give it to Public Works. And when I mowed, I, with the big box mower, I always, after I got done mowing, I went down right to down the middle and blew it off. And maybe I could suggest that when you're, when you're mowing. But as far as Dean goes too, with the trails, it's not only the trails with dog feces, but it's our parks.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, it's a mess and so we say no dogs in the parks, but they still end up there, so.
Only one park says that.
That would be Stevens. Okay. But we'll try for you, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Can I exit the building?
Sure. Elizabeth, you have our blessing.
Thank you so much. I'll be better prepared next time.
Sorry, really quick turnaround.
Oh, no, no worries. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any other, uh, Gloria? I was not on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, I think that's what we're talking about. Um, worded, but, um, if we have just like what happened in Texas, do we have a siren, a warning siren or anything like that?
We do, but it's disconnected right now, cause they're moving it. It's the fire siren, firehouse siren.
Yeah, the old one?
Yeah, but it's being moved for the addition. We're putting on, so right now we do not. But it would be reverse nine-one-one, so everyone would get a call from reverse nine-one-one if we had to.
Okay, I'll let her know.
Okay. All right. So, uh, our next item would be consent agenda approval of the following. A, high school rodeo claims paid in April to Montana High School Rodeo Association for two thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. B, three forks rodeo arena claims paid due to timeliness on six twenty-four, twenty twenty-five totaling six thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars and two cents. C, three forks arena, rodeo arena claims paid on six thirty, twenty twenty-five due to timeliness for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-five totaling four thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. D, uh, city claims paid on six twenty-five, twenty twenty-five due to timeliness for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-five totaling six hundred and six thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-four cents. E, city claims paid on six thirty, twenty twenty-five due to timeliness for fiscal year ending twenty twenty-five and mail utility bills totaling ten thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-five cents. F, city claims to be paid on, for fiscal year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five. And G, city claims to be paid for fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six. H, three forks rodeo arena board claims to be paid. I, city council minutes of six-ten, twenty twenty-five. J, zoning and planning board minutes for five fifteen, twenty twenty-five. K, Northwestern Energy Customer Agreement for new service at eighteen fifty-one Kid Road. A new pump house for new public supply wells uh, southeast of Three Forks City Limits for forty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. L, draw package number thirty-one for the project totaling three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And, uh, three, I mean, three, pardon me, three, uh, three hundred thousand thirty-seven dollars, two hundred and fifteen and twenty-one cents. Uh, draw package from MSEP for the amount of sixty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. Draw number nine from ARPA competitive grant in the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. Draw number sixteen from ARPA minimum allocation grant in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. And draw number twenty-six for ARPA local fiscal recovery in the amount of four thousand dollars, four thousand twenty dollars and fifty cents. And M, uh, FMK draw number two for the flood mitigation project totaling ninety-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and eight cents. Are there any questions at this time, council?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Does the public have any questions? We've had a motion, second, we'll have the vote. Reagan?
Yes.
George? I mean, George is gone. Jean?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And Roxy?
Yes.
Consent is passed. Okay, public hearings. Public hearing and decision on a resolution to increase the minimum base sewer and water rates by ten percent and fifteen percent respectively. City of Three Forks Resolution Number four-four-two, twenty twenty-five, resolution to increase the minimum base sewer and water rates by up to ten percent and fifteen percent respectively. Whereas under section sixty-nine, day seven dash one oh one, MCA, the city has power and authority to regulate, establish a change as it considers proper, proper rates, charges and classifications opposed for utility services to its inhabitants and other persons served by the municipal system. Rates, charges and classifications must be reasonable and just. Whereas pursuant to Three Forks City Ordinance Title Nine, Chapter Four, Section Seven, the city shall review the user system charges every two years and revise as necessary to assure equality of the system and assure that sufficient funds will be collected to adequately operate and maintain the system. After ten years without increases, the Budget Committee has found it necessary to increase rates due to operational and maintenance increases. Testining expense increased, meeting new requirements and to accept additional Montana coal, uh, Montana coal and damp program or MSEP grant funding. Whereas pursuant to section seven, uh, sixty-nine, day seven, dash one eleven, MCA, the council had a public hearing for the resolution of intent to increase the base water and base sewer rates on six-ten, twenty twenty-five and adopted this decision via resolution number four-three-eight, twenty twenty-five. Whereas also pursuant to section sixty-nine, day seven, dash one eleven, MCA, a public hearing for the resolution to adopt the increase of rates for the sewer and water systems was scheduled to be held on July eighth, twenty twenty-five, mentioning at six o'clock at the City Hall, two oh six Main, Three Forks, Montana. Whereas pursuant to seven, dash one, dash forty-one, twenty-seven and sixty-nine, day seven, dash one eleven, two, MCA, public notices were published in the Three Forks Voice on five twenty-eight, six four and six twenty-five of twenty twenty-five in the Bozeman Daily Chronicle on six twenty-four and seven one, twenty twenty-five and in the Belgrade News on seven, three, twenty twenty-five. Whereas pursuant to sixty-nine, dash seven, dash one eleven, six, MCA, the clerks mailed notice to every user of both the water and sewer system as well as the Public Service Commission on six twelve, twenty twenty-five. Now therefore be resolved by Three Forks City Council as follows. Section one, increase sewer rates. System, the city council hereby increases its rates for users of the sewer system effective for the billing period beginning July twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Sewer rates, A. Sewer inactive, uh, sewer connection. Users who have connected to the system, who have turned off or not using any water from the system shall be responsible for the service availability charge each month during any period of turn-off system or non-use of the system. B, sewer charge based on water use. The service availability charge is fifty-four dollars and twenty-five cents per month. This is the base rate for just being connected to the system and covers the first four hundred cubic feet. The monthly usage charge for the amounts in excess of four hundred cubic feet of water go at six dollars and ninety-seven cents for one hundred cube, uh, cubic feet and water used or part thereof. The service availability charge plus the usage charge equals the monthly sewer rate. C, sewer charge not based on water use. Monthly rate for sewer for properties not connected to the city water system and other, and for properties with insufficient monthly usage information is based on household size. The rate per household having a size of one, of one is twenty, uh, is fifty-four dollars and twenty-five cents per month with incremental increases for larger sized household. The following table shows the new monthly service charges for the various users sewer system based on the initial four hundred cubic feet or household size if not connected to the, to the water system. So we have the household size in that, and inactive connection would be fifty-four twenty-five with one person. Fifty-four twenty-five with four hundred cubic feet. Two sixty-eight twenty with six hundred cubic feet. Three seventy-nine ninety, seven hundred and sixty-eight cubic feet. Four eighty-nine forty-five with nine hundred five cubic feet. Five one hundred and two dollars and twenty cents with one thousand eighty-eight cubic feet. Six and up, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-five cents for, with, uh, uh, one thousand three hundred and sixty-four cubic feet. Use rate, the use rate for each one hundred cubic feet over the initial four hundred feet will remain at six ninety-seven. Section two, increase of water rates. The city council hereby increases its rates for users of water system effective for the billing period between July twentieth, uh, beginning July twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Water rates, the following table shows the current and proposed in bold monthly service charge for the various users of the water system based on initial one hundred cubic feet. Flat rate for, would be thirty-nine fifty. Five eighths meter would be thirty-nine fifty. Three-quarter inch meter, uh, forty-two dollars and five cents. One inch would be forty-six dollars and sixty cents. Inch and a quarter, fifty-four twenty. Inch and a half, sixty dollars and twenty cents. One and three-quarter, sixty-two, uh, dollars and fifty-five cents. Two inch, seventy-eight dollars. Two and a quarter inch, seventy-eight, uh, dollars and fifty cents. Two and a half inch, eighty-four, eighty-five. Two and three-quarter inch, ninety-five, ninety-five. Three inch, one thirty-three, uh, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. And four inch meter would be two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. A, monthly water rate. The service charge plus the use of rate equals the monthly water rate. B, use rate. The use rate for each one hundred feet over the initial one hundred cubic feet will remain at a dollar fifty-five. Section three, determination of annual budget for the systems. At least one each year, once each year, the council shall determine the amount of money needed to pay the cost for the systems including, but not limited to, A, payment of the reasonable expenses of operation and maintenance of the system. B, administration of the system. C, the payment of principal and interest on or bonded or other indebtedness of the system. And D, establishment of maintenance of any required reserves, including reserves needed for expenditures for depreciation and replacement of facilities as may be determined necessary from time to time by the council or as covenant in the ordinance or a resolution authorizing any outstanding bonds of the system based on the annual needs of the system. The council will establish monthly charges for the use of the system. Section four, further rate increases. Subsequent adjustments to the rates and charges for the use of the system will be made by a resolution of the city duly adopted after a public hearing with notice thereof given as provided by law. Section five, reminder. Multi-family units, units are charged a base rate for each unit passed and approved by this Three Forks City Council this eighth day of July, twenty twenty-five. So at this time, uh, council, do you have any questions?
A question for the city staff. Uh, have we had any written, uh, notices of happiness or protest from?
No.
None? All right, thank you.
I just wanna point out a technical thing where it says in section two that the following tables shows current and proposed. There is only one.
Right, sorry. So. Excited, yeah. It should just be.
The proposed, yeah.
The table needs to say that too.
So the table is, the, the numbers are correct? Okay. Of the proposed, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, does the public have any questions? No?
Lucas, did you want to say anything?
Um, no.
Okay then.
I'd like to make an emotion to adopt resolution number four-four-two, dash twenty twenty-five, resolution to increase the minimum base sewer and water rates by up to ten and fifteen percent respectively.
Second?
It is moved in seconded?
Is that ready? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, then we'll, we'll have the vote. George?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And Roxy?
Yes.
Resolution four-four-two has passed. Okay, our next item. Get all situated here. The public hearing and decision on a resolution awarding declared surplus property uh, to the highest responsible bill, bidder, excuse me. City of Three Forks, Montana Resolution four-four-three, twenty twenty-five, resolution declaring a certain city property as surplus no longer necessary to conduct city business, authorizing it sale or disposal. Whereas section seven, dash eight, dash one zero one, two, MCA authorizes the city to transfer property that is not necessary for, uh, to conduct, uh, for the, to conduct of the city business or the county or other political subdivision. Whereas the following property owned by the city was declared surplus via resolution number four-three-nine, twenty twenty-five by the city council on six-ten, twenty twenty-five and is hereby approved for sale, lease, transfer or disposal. Whereas section seven, dash five, dash forty-three, zero, seven, MCA authorizes the city council to sell surplus property to the highest responsible bidder after calling for bid purchases. Whereas on seven-one, twenty twenty-five, the mayor opened the bids for political, uh, subdivisions and awarded the nineteen ninety-eight tenant diesel, uh, rider, street sweeper to the town of Stevensville. The remaining property was available for public bid. Whereas pursuant, pursuant to section seven, dash one, dash forty-one, twenty-seven, MCA, the city clerk advertises resolution of intent in the Belgrade News on five twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five and Bozeman Daily Chronicle on six-three, twenty twenty-five and Three Forks Voice on five twenty-eight and six-four, twenty twenty-five that the city would hold this hearing to declare certain property surplus. Notice was also posted on the city's website and Facebook pages and posted in various locations around the town as his city policy. Whereas any property not sold will be offered at a lesser minimum bid disposed of or donated as per section seven, dash eight, dash forty-one, forty-two, zero, one, MCA. So we have, uh, some bids here that, uh, we will look at tonight. And, uh, the first bid is from, uh, Ann Woodley. And it's for, it said, I would like to bid on the PA system app in your surplus property, uh, auction sale. I would bid fifteen dollars for the app, PA system. Fifteen dollars. Okay? Okay, uh, from Jackie Rangle. And it's, uh, five hundred and one dollar bid for the nineteen ninety-six John Deere mower. And, uh, the snowplow and the attachment signal with it. And so we had put it up to bid for five hundred, so.
What was the bid?
Five oh one, five hundred and one. Our next item would be from Frank Parker. I would like to bid on the Lincoln welder generator for, uh, three hundred dollars. And we have a bid for this, uh, sewer back from Christina Camps for five thousand dollars. And that's the end of the bids.
I'll go ahead and finish reading them.
Pardon me?
I'll put them in here if you want.
So that would leave the twenty-five gallon pimple sprayer. And that's, uh, that would leave the two thousand one GMC Sahara hook up for a thousand. And, uh, the two thousand three, uh, sewer jet bid forty thousand. The Rhino mower was twenty-five hundred. The PA system is gone. And other miscellaneous, not. Anyway, so, uh.
Here, we need to read the rest of it. And now the four be resolved part, but I filled in the blanks for you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, therefore be it resolved by the Three Forks City Council that the following surplus property is hereby granted to, uh, the Lincoln welder generator to Frank Parker. The Jay's vacuum, Christina Camps for five thousand. The John Deere four-four-five mower to Jackie Rangle. The tenant sweeper to the town of Stevensville for twelve thousand. And, uh, that's it. Oh, Matt Woodley for the PA and app system for fifteen bucks. Okay, so that would, I'm, I'm gonna ask the council what, what they would like to do with the rest of the property. Uh, lower the bid? Or that would be a good first shot. And Crystal, what, what did you want?
Well, I was thinking you would make a motion to approve this resolution like that and then make the recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
Make a motion to accept resolution four-four-three, dash twenty twenty-five. Resolution declaring certain city property as surplus no longer necessary to conduct city business, authorizing it sale or disposal. A second.
Moving to second, Woodley. Second. Pardon, pardon me?
Sorry, be a second.
Yeah, okay, George, does the, does our audience have anything to say publicly, no? Okay, then we'll have a vote, it's been moved to the second, uh, uh, George?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And Roxy?
Yes.
So the question remains on what kind of, uh, what do you folks wanna do with the rest of the property? We do have the sewer jet, that's pretty high dollar out there.
Um, I think George's idea of offering it for a lower bid is a solid idea.
What kind of bid do you think you'd want? We have it at forty.
Are we just talking about the sewer jet?
And where are the other properties too? So we have the thing, uh, minimum bid on the chemical, but nobody wanted it, it was fifty dollars, so. Jean?
Resolution we just passed on the last whereas, it says, any property not sold will be offered at a lesser minimum bid disposed of or donated as per seven dash eight dash four, two, zero, one, Montana code and wanted. Uh, I think that what we should do, we've already awarded what we've sold, I think that we should review our list. And, uh, the items, I think we got some pretty minimum bid things like for the spreader, some of that stuff that we should just try to, uh, get rid of them, donate them. Uh, but the bigger items, I think that we should have our, uh, city crew look at the bids on some of them and see if we can't lower them and then offer them out there at a lower bid price.
And this will be held at the next meeting?
Well, I, I don't know how, you know, I don't feel like I have, uh, a lot of knowledge on what a sewer back unit is worth, whether it's worth a minimum bid of five thousand or two thousand or whatever.
Well, that one was purchased. That would be the sewer dip for forty thousand.
Thousand, you know, messing with that and there were some other things, but I think we should review them and, uh, let them make a recommendation to the city council on what they think we should do with another one's disposal of their stuff.
Kelly?
Does the John Deere spreader go with the John Deere tractor? Are they two different things?
They're two different.
Okay, that's, that was just my own question.
We got that spreader many years ago to put sand down on the streets. So, okay, well, uh, do I have a motion then to do that?
Uh, I'll make a motion to, would it be to table this discussion until next?
I think that's a good way to do it.
Yeah, um, I'll make a motion to table this, uh, discussion until next meeting, um, after we get feedback from the city works.
I'll second that. Then move in a second, we'll have a vote, George?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And Roxy?
Yes.
Next item C, public hearing adopting impact fees for water, wastewater, fire protection, transportation and municipal buildings. City of Three Forks, Montana, resolution number four, 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 twenty twenty five, adopting the revised impact fee schedule as provided by three, six, dash eleven of the Three Forks Municipal Code. Whereas subject to section seven dash six, day sixteen, zero, two, MCA, the governing body may impose an impact fee based on service area reports. The Impact Fee Advisory Committee, or IFAC, submitted a recommended service area report and fees for water, wastewater, fire protection, transportation and municipal buildings, which was accepted by this, uh, council via resolution number four, three, six, twenty twenty five. Whereas pursuant to section seven dash six dash sixteen, zero, two, two, K, IV, uh, MCA, the adopted impact fees will cover at least a five-year period and may be reviewed and updated at least every five years. Whereas the city, whereas the council reviewed the recommendation set forth in the service area report referenced above and accepts the recommended fee amounts for water, wastewater, fire protection and municipal buildings to be collected consistent with the adopted ordinance four, zero, six, twenty twenty five. Amending Title III Revenue and Finance, Chapter Six, Impact Fees and providing for their administration. Whereas the city council reviewed the specific recommended fees and accepts the recommended fee amounts to be collected in the southeast region for the wastewater and transportation which was, are established with due consideration of the future annexation of lands in the southeast benefit area as described in the service area report. Whereas, the council reviewed the recommended fee for transportation as to small and large scale commercial determining, small scale for, uh, commercial shall be based on four thousand square feet and for large scale commercial shall include the same base fee plus an additional cost for each parking space over sixteen spaces. Whereas in accordance with section seven dash one dash forty one, twenty seven, MCA, this public hearing was published in the Bozeman Daily Chronicle on six, seventeen, in the Belgrade News on six, nineteen and then the Three Forks Voice on six, twenty five, twenty twenty five, as well as posted on the city's website, Facebook pages and around town as his city policy. Therefore, be it resolved that based upon the capital improvements plan, the service area report created by the IFAC, the public comment gathered a at unit, uh, multiple hearings during the various processes. All of the fees, water, wastewater, transportation, municipal buildings, fire protection, southeast residential, large scale commercials sent forth in the attached table for the residential southeast regional, small scale, commercial and large scale commercial labeled as exhibit eight as and are hereby adopted and enacted effective as of this date and will remain in effect within the next revision and update is complete and a new resolution supersedes said fees dated this eighth day of July twenty twenty five. So we live, uh, A, resolution number four, 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 twenty twenty five, total impact fees. If we look at the table to summarize the impact fees calculated in service area reports and shows the total. Table one summary and total of impact fees residential and small commercial less four thousand feet and meter less one inch. So the first one we have, the water numbers. Uh, multi-family would be five, seventy five, uh, sixty two, single family unit, six, twenty four, sixty one. Commercial per square feet up to four thousand would be, uh, sixty four. Kelly, would that be sixty four cents?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Wastewater, southeast residential, multi-family per unit, two thousand one dollar, six cents, single family unit per, uh, per unit would be two thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and forty two cents and the remainder of Three Forks multi-family, uh, per unit was four thousand, six hundred and, uh, thirty nine dollars and twenty nine cents, single family per unit, five thousand, thirty four dollars and twelve cents. Commercial per square foot up to twelve thousand would be two, just say two dollars and eighty eight cents.
Four thousand. Up to four thousand.
Up to four thousand, yes, okay. Stormwater, all right, uh, there's nothing there, transportation, southeast residential, multi-family per unit. Seven thousand, two hundred and ninety six dollars and sixty one cents, single family per unit, seven thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty cents, remainder of the Three Forks, uh, multi-family per unit, single family per unit, uh, multi-family per unit would be two thousand, five hundred and forty one dollars, thirty cents, single family per unit, two thousand, seven hundred and fifty seven dollars and fifty eight cents, commercial per square foot up to four thousand would be sixteen dollars and fifty cents. Municipal buildings, all residential per unit would be, uh, uh, twenty three dollars, forty nine cents per, uh, square unit, square foot, but I mean, the commercial with square feet up to four thousand would be forty six cents. Fire protection, all residential per unit would be seven dollars and sixty nine cents, commercial per square foot up to four thousand would be, would that be fourteen cents, Kelly?
Yes.
Fourteen cents, okay, total impact fees. Uh, southeast residential, multi-family per unit, ten thousand dollars, eighty four, ten thousand and eighty four dollars and ninety seven cents, single family per unit, ten thousand dollars, nine hundred, ten thousand, nine hundred and thirty three dollars and eighty cents. For the remainder of Three Forks, multi-family per unit, seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty seven dollars and thirty nine cents. Single family per unit, eight thousand, five hundred and twenty seven dollars and forty nine cents. Commercial per square foot up to four thousand dollars would be twenty dollars and twenty one cents. And it says some of the, uh, per square foot impact fees for commercial uses must be adjusted upward for larger commercial projects as explained below and in the service area reports. On our next page, we have large scale commercial based on meter size for the first four thousand square feet of building area for commercial, non-residential proj- projects. Uh, sixty four cents per square foot up to four thousand square feet, build, uh, building area adjusted upward. If the water meter is larger than one inch and diameter using the table as well. So we have water impact being adjusted for meter size. The meter size, the first one would be a five eighths to a one inch meter would be sixty four, uh, just say sixty five cents. Uh, inch and a quarter would be ninety cents, inch and a half would be one dollar and twenty nine. Two inch, two, two dollars and sixty four cents, three inch, four dollars and, uh, thirteen cents. Four, four inch would be six dollars and, uh, forty five cents, six would be twelve. Nine, eight would be twenty sixty four. So the wastewater system impact be adjusted for meter size, meter size from a five eighths to a one inch would be two dollars and eighty eight cents, inch and a quarter would be four. Inch and a half, five, seventy six, two inch, nine, twenty two, three inch, twelve, uh, eighty two. Inch, eighteen, forty five, six inch, twenty nine dollars and, uh, fifty one cents. And then eight inch would be forty one dollars and two cents, commercial per square feet sixteen dollars and fifty cents with this being increased by a fee of four thousand, one hundred and twenty five dollars fifty cents per parking space after the first sixteen spaces. Example, retail, commercial buildings can safely be assumed to be the most common significant traffic generators of Three Forks Girls. A typical retail commercial building of four thousand square feet will be required to provide twelve to twenty parking spaces, dividing the trail impact fee, a trial impact fee for, uh, four thousand square feet. Retail building for sixteen parking spaces yields four thousand, one hundred and twenty five dollars and fifty cents per space. That's it.
That's it.
That's it, okay.
So you got?
I'm looking for something else. Counsel?
Uh, on the second whereas, um, it says, uh, the adopted impact fees will cover at least a five-year period and may be reviewed and updated at least every five years. Just to clarify, if we deem it necessary, we would be able to review these, uh, more frequently than every five years if we need to?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
George?
Um, before anyone votes, I have a spreadsheet up here because I, I think we really need to consider the commercial under four thousand square feet at the highest amount because you can do lower, um, we didn't change anything for the southeast zoning for the transportation. But we had talked about it one of the previous meetings, um, about lowering that commercial right now. If you can see up there, does it even make it bigger, anybody?
Little bit.
How's that?
Yeah.
Okay, so water, sewer, building and fire, what would be charged now? It's five thousand, um, nine hundred and thirty four. The, the water based on the square footage is across the top between a thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand square feet. Would be for those ones that are charged now. And I don't think there's any problem with those, the problem I think we need to look at is transportation. At sixteen dollars and fifty cents per square foot at a thousand square feet, you're gonna ask someone to pay sixteen thousand dollars for transportation on a retail space in Three Forks for a thousand square feet. So they pay twenty thousand dollars in impact fees and right now they would pay me six thousand. As it goes up, um, four thousand square foot, which would have to be two city lots because they're twenty five hundred square feet each, so we'd have that's five thousand square feet, so it'd be two city lots, we would be asking them to pay eighty thousand dollars. If we dropped it down to the five dollars and seventy eight cents, which is on this, uh, exhibit B in the service area reports, the numbers are in green, you could also go lower than that, you guys have, you can't go any higher than what was in those, the, the report, but we can always do lower, I think for commercial, I think a four thousand square foot business asking to pay eighty thousand dollars in impact fees is, is low to the top of the reports, you know? When right now it's six thousand. So, I just wanted to show you in numbers what it looks like, um, to see, you might, because you can change that pretty easily tonight, we just changed one number on here. Um, the other thing I think we need to change in the ordinance, I should have caught it when we put the exhibit together. It should say five eighths meter to one inch meter for water and sewer because we do have five eighths meters in town. Um, you don't want to talk about?
Yeah.
Okay, and then probably on whichever you decide for the exhibit, we should have all commercial, not just commercial because it looks like it's remaining, remainder of Three Forks commercial, but it should be all commercial, so if the southeast zoning district starts um, implementing and they have commercial, that should be all commercial up to four thousand square feet. The way when we did this, it looks like it just says a remainder of Three Forks, they would pay that, but we need to know commercial for the southeast also, but those are the things that I have, but the main thing is the numbers for commercial development.
Eric? Um, when I'm reading this chart, uh, the current numbers are at the very top and unhighlighted, correct, those totals?
This column, the far left column is the current numbers that we charge now.
Okay.
Like transportation is zero, we don't have a transportation impact fee now at all.
Okay.
So that's why they're all the same, this number and then this number and this number are all the same because that's what we charge for impact fees, water, sewer and fire. And then as you go across this column, can you, yeah, you can see my notes, a thousand square feet, that's what they would pay for these top four numbers, which is lower than what they pay now, so I, I think that's not a bad thing for two thousand square feet, it's a little more and it goes up for water, sewer and that, so I, I, I think these numbers, you can change them if you want to also. Um, but the big one is the, the transportation, that's a big number for people, um, that, that wanna bring in a small business. And this is what's in the, the exhibit right now is the sixteen dollars and fifty cents per square foot.
Make changes, do we just have to make a motion or do we have to amend the resolution?
We can change it and Crystal can print out the new one, if you wanna see a different number besides the five dollars and seventy eight cents, tell me what it is, I'll put it in and it'll change all the numbers.
Where did you get the five dollars and seventy eight cents?
Exhibit B, um, that we, the IFAC looked at originally was to drop the southeast area to the five dollars and seventy eight cents to make transportation for the southeast zone lower. And then they also recommended that being for commercial too.
Um, that was in the service area.
That was in the service area reports, yeah, I can bring that up if you wanna see, it's the exact same spreadsheet as in the, the resolution. It just had, um, a lesser amount for the southeast residential numbers. And then it was the nine dollars total, nine dollars and twenty one, eight cents, I think, for the commercial under four thousand square feet. Was the recommendation, but you can, you can change it to three dollars, you can change it to seven dollars. Um, it's up to you guys and like I said, I can change that number and you can see what it does to the, all the, up to four thousand square feet.
Could we try six, we just see what it does to the numbers?
Yeah.
What about four?
What about four?
Every dollar.
He has a spreadsheet for everything.
I have a spreadsheet. I love it. Very helpful. But I mean, each dollar would change it by a thousand dollars because it's a thousand square feet. So each dollar would change it by a thousand.
And there are no current transportation, transportation impact fees for, for new businesses over?
Right.
Okay.
We've never charged any transportation.
We didn't have any major projects in the CIP that was.
Well, I think the sixteen five oh two is a bit excessive. That, that seems wildly insane, uh, just from my perspective. I think we should definitely go for a lower number.
I agree.
I would make a motion that we change that fee to five dollars and fifty cents. That's halfway in between four and, no, not either. I think five fifty. A little less than what you had proposed, weren't you, at five?
I was just showing what was in the exhibit. I think for small business, I personally would probably go lower than five fifty, but that's just to get businesses to come here, but.
You have two small business owners, I believe.
Yeah.
You build.
But would you pay thirty-six?
Yeah. But four, we would have a smaller piece of question.
What square footage is?
I have no idea.
I probably guess two to three.
Yeah.
It's a gimmick.
So if she was to build the building now, she would pay between eighteen and twenty-two thousand.
I mean, I, I would say we should go lower than five fifty. Four fifty.
Lower everything by about a thousand. It seems a little bit more doable. It's hard to see into the future.
They also have the option, if someone comes to town to build something, they can appeal it to the city council. If there's a reason like they're not going to use as much water or they're not going to have as many cars, they have that option in the ordinance, which will be right around the next. Um, to go to the council to get a lower fee too. So, um, this would just be someone walking in, what we would tell them what the impact fees would be.
That makes it easier.
I'm a lot more comfortable with the four fifty than I was with the other numbers.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we use four dollars and fifty cents per square foot, uh, for the impact fee number. Second. Okay.
Are you just going to do this part right now and then we'll do the rest or you want to make?
I thought we had to change that to get it right in the thing and then.
You can make a motion to approve with the following changes and add them all in one motion. That's where I thought.
I didn't want to make much people mad.
You can just do it three times then.
Okay. I'll wait until.
Yeah.
I said.
Well, you have a motion in a second, so.
Okay. Then we'll have the vote. George?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Jean? Yes, good.
Yes.
You're it?
Yes.
Roxy?
Yeah.
Motion's passed.
That was just for the adoption of the.
Transportation. Okay, now, Crystal, we got to do the rest, going.
Right. And so there's the other amendments and I want to make sure I got them right because I have several documents on my screen now. Um, Kelly, it was to add the word all under the remainder of three forks commercial section in table one. And then in table, on page three, to change it from point seven five in both columns over those tables to point sixty-five. Yes, to make five inches. Any others in the document? You guys saw any typos, anything else? Oh, and I got to change the amount from sixteen five oh two to four fifty?
Yes. And it would also change.
And that still would say all commercial right there as well.
Right. Well, no, I mean, that doesn't need to. It's, I think, just the total needs to say all. Where then? Because in the, the, under total impact fees is where I was thinking.
Oh, okay.
And then we give you the number that that'll go to.
Get rid of this over here. And then I can pull it up on the screen too if you guys want. They made this stupid little table to get out of the way though. I can listen to Kelly if you need me. No, you tell me when you're in. I'm trying to merge. Are you in the, in the Word document? Yeah, but table there, you lose stuff when you add the word all. Uh, and it's like it has an anchor and I can't get it out of the way. So I'm trying to just take that, those words and put them somewhere else. We should just wrap it. Look at how many you want me to just pull up what I have.
I still actually have that chart because it's hard to see those numbers. Because, you know, it's like sixty.
I think we can go ahead and do the resolution.
Yeah, but I'm trying to. I, but I've also got to listen to you. Change it to all commercial and it'll be eight dollars.
Okay.
Point two one six. This change to four dollars and fifty cents down here.
Hmm.
And then I need to change the.
To point sixty-five.
And then I'll get back into the minutes and you guys can make a.
Down here it needs to be four fifty. Okay, so that's the changes.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution number four, four, four dash twenty, twenty-five. Adopting the revised impact fee schedule as provided by three dash six dash eleven of the Three Forks Municipal Code with the changes made to the documents. Second? It has been moved in second. Does the public have anything to say?
I have a question.
Yes.
Why does the southeast side have to pay so much more?
Because there's no infrastructure over there.
That's the new subdivision going in up by the tank. That's the difference between this water and sewer is he's going to put in his own sewer and water lines.
Yeah.
And so that, that's why his is different there, but when it comes to roads and that tough change and stuff.
That makes sense.
Okay, and it's been moved in second. We'll have the vote, George?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
You're it?
Yes.
And Roxy?
Yeah.
Okay, our next item is a public hearing and decision on a first reading of an ordinance amending title three revenue, uh, finance, chapter six, impact fees. And I am going to read the first page and then I'm going to ponder off on everybody else. All right. So, uh, in the city, we have three forks, Montana, ordinance number four, zero, six, twenty, twenty-five, and ordinance replacing title three, revenue and finance, chapter six, impact fees and providing for their administration. Whereas the city of Three Forks anticipates study and increasing population growth, the reasons for and probable extent of which are documented in envisioned three forks, the city's twenty twenty-two growth policy and the capital improvements plan adopted in August, twenty twenty-four. Whereas the capital improvements plan shows that numerous improvements in public facilities are needed to serve the anticipated growth. Whereas cities are authorized by section seven dash six, dash sixteen, zero, one, MCA exec, which means and what follows, to charge impact fees to help pay the cost of upgrading or building facilities necessitated by growth. Whereas the city council conducted a public hearing on June tenth, twenty twenty-five, which it accepted the impact fee advisory committee's recommended service area reports dated April, twenty twenty-five. Whereas the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four effort to update the city impact fees led to a review of title three, chapter six of the Three Forks Code and determination that the timing was appropriate to revise and update to a new impact fee ordinance for ease of understanding and administration. Whereas the impact fee advisory committee recommended the city include administrative fees to each impact fee in, in its charges pursuant to section seven dash six dash one sixteen, zero, one, five, A, MCA. However, administrative, uh, fees, uh, re-administering fee was rescinded from the law via Senate Bill one thirty-three in twenty twenty-five legislative session. And that's why we're here. Whereas pursuant to section seven dash one dash forty-one, thirty-one, MCA, notice of scheduled public hearings for the first and second readings of this ordinance appeared in the postman data chronicle on seventeen, twenty, twenty-five, and the Belgrade news on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, in the Three Forks uh, voice on twenty twenty-five and July second, twenty twenty-five, as well as being posted on the city website, city Facebook page and around town at various physical locations. Now therefore, being ordained by the Three Fork City Council that title three, chapter six of the Three Fork City Code is replaced as follows, three dash six dash one, purpose. As authorized by section seven dash sixteen, zero, one, exec, exec, the MCA, this ordinance provides for the adoption and administration of impact fees that will help the city pay for the new and improved public facilities needed to support its growth. Three dash six dash two definitions. A, an accessory dwelling unit is a self-contained living unit on the same parcel of a single-family dwelling with greater square footage that includes its own cooking, sleeping and sanitation facilities that complies with or is otherwise exempt from any applicable, uh, building code for fire code and public health and safety regulations adopted pursuant to title fifty, chapter two, MCA. For further definition, please see section seventy-six dash two dash three forty-five, MCA. Roxy, would you like to read the next page too?
B, a benefit area is geographically bounded portion of the city of Three Forks in which development is served by a particular improvement or set of improvements listed in the CIP that does not serve other parts of the city. Impact fees will be different in different benefit areas. C, capital improvement, which is usually shortened to improvement in this chapter means improvements, land and equipment with a useful life of ten years or more that increase or improve the service capacity of a public facility. The term does not include consumable supplies. D, the capital improvements plan, CIP, is a public document adopted by the city council that evaluates the capacity of the city's public facilities and qualifies the present and anticipated demand for those facilities. The CIP compares capacity and demand to identify the need for additional or improved facilities and estimates their costs. E, a change of use for the purpose of three dash six dash three D of the Three Fork City Code occurs when an additional dwelling unit is added to an existing, existing building or when an existing residential building is converted to commercial use or an existing commercial building is converted to residential or when an existing building, structure or use is changed to a more intense commercial or residential use. For this definition, intensity will be measured by the change in water meter size. If a larger water meter will be installed, it is a change in use. Or parking, if additional parking spaces must be provided to comply with the title eleven, chapter twenty-four of this code, it is a change in use. That, for the purposes of this chapter, all non-residential uses are commercial. G, development includes development of land divisions that are, that create new lots or rights of way grading, including clearing, excavation and fill, the construction, reconstruction, enlargement or relocation of any building or structure and/or any change in the use of a site, building or structure. Please see title eleven, chapter four for more detail. H, a building or structure is enlarged for the purpose of section three dash six dash four D when its area increases by more than fifty percent or one thousand square feet, whichever is less. I, consistent with section seven dash six dash one six zero one five, MCA, an impact fee is a one-time charge that helps cover the cost of capital improvements needed to serve the development for which the fee is collected.
You're, could you read three?
Yep. Uh, J, an impact fee advisory committee, IFAC, is required by section seven dash six dash sixteen oh four, MCA. Its purpose is to provide citizen review of the CIP in preparation for the service area reports. Based on its reviews, the IFAC makes recommendations to the council. Public facility, uh, K, public facilities are listed by section seven dash six, sixteen oh one, seven, MCA, including a water supply production, treatment, storage or distribution facility, a wastewater collection, uh, treatment or disposal facility, a transportation facility, including roads, streets, bridges, right of way, traffic signals and landscaping, a stormwater collection, retention, detention, treatment or disposal facility, or a flood control facility, a police emergency medical rescue or fire protection facility and other facilities for which documentation is prepared as provided in section seven dash six dash sixteen oh one, MCA that have been approved as part of an impact fee ordinance or resolution by two-thirds majority of the governing body of an incorporated city, town or consolidated local government. L, service area reports are required by section seven dash six dash sixteen oh two, MCA, which specifies the contents. Service area reports are public documents that build on the capital improvement plans to calculate trial impact fees for the review of the IFAC and action by the council. M, the standards for design and construction referred to in section three dash six dash nine D is the current version of a detailed set of engineering standards adopted by the city. N, this code is used to refer to the Three Forks City Code. O, additional definitions set forth in section seven dash six dash sixteen oh one, MCA are included herein if fully set forth. Three dash six dash three, applicability. A, any new or enlargement of principal building, structure or use or any new dwelling unit that is added to an existing building or structure change in use for which zoning permit is required by title eleven of this code must pay the applicable impact fee adopted by the impact fee resolution that is authorized by section three dash six dash six. B, accessory buildings, structures or uses for which zoning permit is required by title eleven, chapter four of this code that will be connected to the city utilities must pay the applicable impact fees adopted in the impact fee resolution that is authorized by section three dash six dash six. C, temporary buildings, structures and uses do not pay impact fees. D, the determination of impact fees for commercial development of up to four thousand square feet, uh, noted SF in building areas will be made using the per square foot fees calculated in the service area reports. The impact fees for larger commercial buildings or structures will be determined as provided in E to G below.
Jean, would you like to read four first? City of Three Forks, Montana, E, the per square, per square foot water and wastewater impact fees for larger commercial buildings and structures shall be calculated by increasing the per square foot water and wastewater impact fees in direct proportion to the flow rate of the meter or meter serving the proposed building or structure. The higher fees will be applied to the first four thousand square feet of commercial building or structure. F, the impact fee for transportation for large commercial buildings and structures shall be the same as adopted in the service area report for the first four thousand square feet of building area plus an additional fee for each additional onsite parks, parking space after the first sixteen. That fee is to be specified in the resolution adopting the impact fees. G, the per square foot impact fee for fire protection and municipal buildings for commercial development shall be calculated in the service area reports for the entire area of the building or structure. H, any applicant or annexation zoning site plan or subdivision may present a professionally prepared impact fee study that is consistent with section seven dash six dash sixteen oh one, MCA, and this chapter as an alternate to the calculations of. MCA, and this chapter has an alternate to the calculations of D dash G above. That alternative may be accepted by the city council on finding that it is more accurately reflects the demand of the proposed development that development will place on public facilities. Such alternative studies must be reviewed by the IAA, IFAC prior to their consideration by the city council. Three dash six dash four, collection. Impact fees will be collected or credited as provided by Section three dash six dash nine before the approval of a zoning permit. Site plan or conditional use permit to develop is finalized. Three dash six dash five, limits on expenditure. Impact fees may be applied only to the design and construction of capital improvements listed in the capital improvements plan and the service area green, service area reports. No other use of these fees is permitted. Three dash six dash six, adoption slash revision. A, impact fees may be adopted or revised by a resolution of the city council following a recommendation from the IFAC and a public hearing for which notice is provided as required by state law. B, revisions to the resolution adopting and revising impact fees may be made as often as needed to reflect changes in the CIP, including the completion improvements and the recommendations of the IFAC. IFAC recommendations must include an updated service area report. Three dash six dash seven.
Uh, Jean, will that Reagan continue there through page, uh, through page five?
Three dash six dash seven, Impact Fee Advisory Committee, IFAC. Pursuant to Section seven dash six dash sixteen oh four MCA, an IFAC shall be established by the council. The IFAC's purpose shall be to provide annual citizen review of the CIP, the service area reports, the impact fees, and their administration, then based on its reviews make recommendations to the council. Three dash six dash eight, accounting. The city treasurer shall, shall create a separate interest-bearing fund for each adopted impact fee, including separate funds for each benefit area. As provided by three dash six dash five of this code, these funds may be used only for the design and construction of capital improvements that are listed in the capital improvements plan and the applicable service area report. Six, three dash six dash nine, credits. The council may agree to have an applicant construct or install facilities that the city would otherwise build or install using at least in part impact fees. B, such an agreement will ordinarily be part of the improvements agreement required for annexation or subdivision in Title eleven of this code, but its ordinance does not prohibit a separate contract. C, where such an agreement is approved by the council, the applicant's actual cost will be created, credited against the impact fees that would be owed as applications for zoning permits are approved. If the actual cost of construction or installation are expected to exceed the anticipated impact fees, the agreement required by A above will require that the city pay the difference from specifically identified funds. D, all work performed by an applicant pursuant to this section shall be in full compliance with the regulations of Title eleven of this code, including any applicable conditions of approval and the improvements agreement as applicable, and with the city's standards for design and construction, particularly including the requirements of those standards for inspections, acceptance, and warranty of the improvements made by the applicant. Three dash six dash ten, unused impact fees. A, impact fees that are not collected or used as provided or in the CIP and service area report shall be returned to the person who owned the property at the time the fees were collected. B, impact fees will be retained for the life cycle of the improvement for which they were assessed before refund is made. For water and wastewater impact fees, this will be forty years. For all other improvements, the cycle shall be calculated based on current data.
Okay, thank you, Ray. I'll finish this off then. Three dash six dash eleven, appeals. A, as required by Section seven dash six dash sixteen oh three eight MCA, anyone who has paid an impact fee who believes that the charge was an error may file an appeal that will be heard before the council. B, the city council shall establish the appeal fee by res- resolution. An applicant who chooses to appeal the assessment or calculation of impact fees, determination of exemption, some credits, or other decision of city staff shall submit an appeal and payment of a long refund. Application fee within thirty days following the date of decision of determination by the city staff. The application of appeal may stay the collection of the impact fee. C, appeals will be considered by the city council. The city council will, shall consider the appeal in accordance with the rules and regulations of the governing body. The decision of the city council shall, in all instances, be the final administering decision and shall be subject to judicial review in accordance with applicable law. D, the council shall, uh, deny the appeal or upon finding that the impact fee had been appealed was inapplicable or erroneously assessed, order a full or partial payment or no payment. Three dash six dash twelve, savings clause. In any provision of this ordinance, the resolution adopted impact fees authorized by three dash six dash six A of this code for this application in particular circumstances are found to be invalid by a court. The reminder of this ordinance or impact fee resolution and their application in all other circumstances shall be affected. Save and accept where the amendments described herein, the previous Title III, Chapter Six is repealed and hereby replaced by this version. First reading and approval dated this eighth day of July, twenty twenty-five. Counsel, are there any questions on this? Any questions? I make the motion that we approve ordinance number four oh six two zero two five, an ordinance replacing Title III Revenue and Finance, Chapter Six, Impact Fees, and providing for their administration. Second. It has been moved to second. Does the public have anything to say? Okay, then we will have the vote. George?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
And Roxy?
Yes.
Motion to pass. Okay. Our next item. It is a public hearing on a resolution ratifying, ratifying a closure of city departments on Thursday, July third, twenty twenty-five. Three Forks, Montana, Resolution forty-five, twenty twenty-five, Resolution of the Three Forks City Council Ratifying a Closure of the City Departments on Thursday, July third, twenty twenty-five. Whereas the Charter of the City Three Forks bests the mayor with powers and duties to administer, administer the affairs of the city government in Article three, Section three point zero eight point three. Whereas City Hall requested full closure of all departments on Thursday, the day before, uh, twenty twenty-five, Fourth of July holiday weekend. Whereas staff of these departments could take appeal compensatory, compensatory, or vacation time for payment of this day or leave without pay. Whereas essential services with on-call shall remain available to the citizens and provide said services. Now therefore be resolved by the authority of the mayor and with approval of the Three Fork City Council that this, that it allowed all city hall and public works to be closed for business exclusive of on-call essential services all day on Thursday, July third, twenty twenty-five. So basically, it's all done. It's official now, and I was going to tell Heather that maybe, you know, you should, uh, should let all your boys off on Thursday.
Right, yeah.
Anyway, do I have a motion to accept this, uh, Resolution four four five?
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution number four four five dash twenty twenty-five, Resolution of the Three Fork City Council Ratifying a Closure of the City Department on Thursday, July third, twenty twenty-five.
Second? Second, we'll have the vote. George?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
And Roxy?
Yes.
I thought that was pretty sneaky, but we got to. Okay, uh, our next item is report from officers. And, uh, our city clerk has questions to the ordinance committee. Crystal?
Um, my question is, we, as you're seeing tonight, the additional dog permit, and we did one in May, um, the ordinance requires us to notify neighbors within three hundred feet, including alleys and streets and things like that. So we ended up notifying two and a half blocks. It's more than zoning. I think it came about because of, you can hear dogs maybe that far is why I think that maybe that's where the complaints came from, when we changed that. But it's, we sent out, you know, forty-two, I think, was the last one, and sixty or something, because she lives in small, there's smaller lots over here. Uh, so the one that you'll hear tonight, but like sixty notices where zoning ones may be twenty. And so I was just curious if you guys would be agreeable to reducing that to a hundred and fifteen feet exclusive of the right-of-ways and streets and alleys, so it still would be more of like a, the same as any zoning, about a one and a half block rather than sometimes three blocks away is what we're notifying. And then the other one is, right now, it's, it's a little vague, but you can read it. We allow the water sewer bills to be put in a tenant's name. And it's a lot of administration. I've done some research over the last year or two of how many times we change an account from when I move out of my rental house, or I, or a new owner moves into a new, a new house. It's two to one. So we spend twice as much time every month changing over accounts, sending newsletters, notifying two people for one account because it's in their landlord's, in the renter's name. Most towns don't put it in their renter's name. It stays with the property owner. So that would be another one that I would like to change both of those. And so I was asking, before I spend any time on it, ask you guys what your thoughts were.
Yes.
Makes sense.
Do you have anything in your packet for the, the tenant one, because you do it for the dog one?
No.
Okay. I just want to make sure it goes, you can bring it.
No.
That seems very reasonable.
Yes.
For, for the tenant one, too, um, we don't prorate, and most people move out on the thirtieth. So then we have people saying, well, I don't know, I moved out, and landlord's saying, well, you do because we're there most of the month, and then we're stuck in the middle of, we don't prorate. So it's rating on the twentieth, who owes what? Plus, we have about ten thousand dollars that we have in water deposits that people have paid, that we would refund back on their accounts if we transfer them back into the, um, landlord's name, so we wouldn't have to track that, those funds either. It would be up to the landlord.
It's one of those where, then you tell, you talk to a landlord sometimes, and they say, well, our tenant owes it, you need to go out with them. They're gone. Yeah. You know? Or we, like, in one of the claims tonight, we sent back sixteen twenty-five to somebody who's had a hundred dollar bound, a hundred dollar deposit, their bill is only eighty-three seventy-five, they've moved out. Now we owe them sixteen twenty-five back, so it's a claim that comes in. It just takes, it's just a lot more steps, so.
And it can be a decision that going forward, we don't put it in, and then as people move out, or we could take everyone as a tenant now and switch them over. I mean, there's a lot of different options there, because there are some people that have been renters for twenty years that have never had an issue. So those are the kind of questions we'd have to know if we change it back or change it out. Bozeman does not put it in the landlord's name. The landlord can get an email, and then the bill can be sent to the address, but it's in the landlord's name. So it arrives, like, my place in Bozeman, it comes to Kelly Smith, and they get it, and they pay it, um, but I get an email on that, so.
Is this something we would need to make a choice or recommendation on right tonight? Or, I mean, I think changing those things is reasonable, um, but I, I personally would need a little bit more time to kind of think of, especially that question about like, does it happen all at once? Or is it from here moving forward? I think that could use a little bit more consideration for me.
I kind of think it's put on the floors here as moving forward.
It's, Kelly just said that. I would, I would say I would apply all and change them all next month, or, you know, whenever it actually changed. It'd be easier just to be one and done for, to, in my opinion. But I can see there are, like Kelly said, there's, you know, people that had a, they still have a fifty-dollar deposit on there, and that, they haven't had a fifty-dollar deposit for a really long time. And so, um, they, they are, they, we don't have to, we don't have to do anything with them ever. They, they, there's just like, I don't know, just doesn't get as much paperwork. It's the ones that move somewhere every six months, and then you're tracking their deposit, you're changing their mailing address, you're changing it from, you know, me, I'm a renter, so you change it from my house, the owner's house name to my name, then I move out back to the owner's name, then you find out who the next tenant is, and you change to the tenant's name. So you've done it four times in one month. And it's just, it gets ridiculous. So I would say one and done, but.
And I'm, I don't care either. I mean, I'm just saying that could be an option with, not, and my concern would be the landlords aren't going to be very happy about this. But if it's all at once, I'm, I'm fine with that, too. I'm just throwing out the options, but it would have to be considered because it wasn't noticed.
Yeah. You guys, why don't you think about it, and you guys can all tell us how you want it, because I'm not going to draft it tomorrow, you know? And I don't think we would be ready for a reading in August either, because it'll take some time to get this going. But you can let us know what you're, how you prefer, and I'll put it on the agenda so you remember to, okay?
Awesome, thank you. Okay, then, thanks, Crystal. Anything else from you?
No, not really.
Okay, Kelly?
The only thing I have is I wanted to say thank you to Garrett for putting in the new water station at the library. Um, they really like it over there, so.
I hope it stays there for many years.
It was very kind of you. It was nice having you live on the library.
That's one of the reasons why it happened.
Okay. Dale's is not here, and, uh, we'll continue on then. Uh, reports from council committees, if any.
No, but we did schedule, just so you guys know, because we've been working on it for the last couple of, I feel like forever, on the Parks Committee, but that one is, there'll be a Parks Committee at nine AM on July twenty-fifth here at Sleep Hall, and a City Property Committee on Thursday, July twenty-fourth at three thirty here at Sleep Hall.
You're not on either one, Jean.
Good.
It's the twenty-fourth at three thirty.
Three thirty. Great. Thank you. Okay, unfinished business, uh, flood mitigation process, Kelly?
They're still working on getting the plans done to send them off. They said they would have mitigation plans before the end of July, would be ready to send to FEMA for the conditional letter of master approval. Um, we want to get them out now because when the other fiscal year, like the October, I think it's the end of September, the federal government's fiscal year changes or something like that, um, there might not be some of the contract workers at FEMA might not have jobs anymore because they don't have funding. And so we want to get the letter, conditional letter of master provision up to them so they can get an approval on it before that might happen. Um, but everything's moving along smoothly, and as soon as we get that, then we're ready to go out for bids and start constructing. Moving along.
Thank you. Okay, uh, water project update, Susan's on vacation, so we will, uh, get into that. I have seen progress on the water main river. And, uh, the meetings have been going well. So on the, our next meeting, which, which will be, uh, in August, we'll get on that. And then, uh, our next item is, uh, decision on a resolution approving one oh five East Adams Street for more than four dogs. So, City of Three Forks, Montana, Resolution number four four one, twenty twenty-five, a resolution approving one old East Adams Street, Three Forks, Montana, for more than four dogs. Whereas, Three Forks, City Ordinance six dash eight dash three, additional dog permit was enacted by a passage on November tenth, twenty twenty-four, of ordinance four zero two dash twenty twenty-four, becoming effective on September tenth, twenty twenty-four. Whereas John Sarah Jorgensen moved into live in Sarah's father, Harold Ross, with Sarah's father, Harold Ralston, on one oh five East Adams Street, Three Forks, Montana, during May of twenty twenty-four. Whereas in May of twenty twenty-four and prior to the enactment of six dash eight three, additional dog permit, City of Three Forks City ordinances allowed for persons with three, three or more dogs to apply for a kennel license, which at the time allowed for an unspecified number of over three dogs to live at a property. Between May of twenty twenty-four and April of twenty twenty-five, no person residing at one oh five East Adams sought the city's approval of a kennel license nor license to dogs living at one oh five East Adams. Whereas with the enactment of ordinance four zero two dash twenty twenty-four that amended six dash four A. Whereas with the enactment of ordinance four, zero, two, dash twenty twenty-four that amended six dash four A dash three additional dog permits, the city, uh, terminated the avenue of seeking a kennel license in favor of ordinance six dash four A dash three additional dog permit. Whereas upon the enactment of the ordinance six dash four A three additional dog permit, it became unlawful for any person, family or group of persons in the same building to keep, harbor or maintain more than four dogs of any age with, with or without an issued permit in or upon a property. Whereas prior, whereas prior to the city council meeting of May 27th, twenty twenty-five, the Gallivan County Sheriff's attention was called to one oh five East Adams Street and the dogs housed thereupon because of a dog bite report of the hot, to the hospital of a dog residing at one oh five East Adams, well, the neighbor and their dog was also at one oh five East Adams Street. Whereas at the time of the dog bite investigation for which no further action was requested, the city learned that the dogs living at one oh five East Adams Street were not licensed and exceeded the total allowed as an active by ordinance six, eight, four, dash eight, three additional dog permit. Whereas on April 29th, twenty twenty-five, John and Sarah Jorgensen licensed three dogs, three of the dogs and made an application ordinance six dash four, three additional dog permit, acknowledging that they were not sought a kennel license nor licensed their three dogs or cite, sought licenses for Sarah's father's two dogs, all residing at one oh five East Adams. The reason offered for not bringing the property into, uh, compliance before or after the enactment of six dash four A three additional dog permit was they did not want to rehome or put down a dog in order to comply with municipal ordinances. In April, uh, in the April 29th, twenty twenty-five, uh, additional dog application, the Jorgenson sought approval of keeping all five dogs until at such time the oldest dog passed away. Leaving three dogs at one oh five East Adams. Whereas the City of Three Forks provided the notice of the hearing to be held on May 27th, twenty twenty-five in forty-two neighboring properties, see exhibit A, in accordance with the ordinance. At the time of the hearing, no person provided written or oral comment on the ordinance six dash four A dash three additional dog permit for one oh five East Adams Street. Whereas at the time of the public hearing held on May 27th, twenty twenty-five through applicant presentation, the city was advised there, there are five dogs living at one oh five East Adams Street. The oldest dog of the five has been in the family for many years, but the age of the dog is unknown. It has been assumed that the oldest of the five dogs is quite old to the fact that the dog has no teeth remaining and is dying in death. In addition to this dog without teeth, two of the dogs are ranged from ten years of age or over remaining. Two, two other dogs are six years and four and a half respectively. Whereas the applicants acknowledged the use of bark collars when they are not present at one oh five East Adams Street. Whereas during the May 27th, twenty twenty-five hearing, the council learned uh, there have been no complaints regarding the dogs at one oh five East Adams Street. And Mayor Reddick reported the Gallivan County Sheriff's Officer grade on us in, into the record with described acceptable condition of property housed and having met each dog residing at one oh five Adams Street. Whereas at the May 27th, twenty twenty-five meeting, hearing Sarah Jorgensen, uh, hearing Sarah Jorgensen informed the council that one of the five dogs travels, travels with her husband unless is only present at one oh five East Adams Street Friday evening until Sunday afternoon weekly. It is presumed that the same dog would be present daily if Mr. Jorgensen was at one oh five East Adams during vacation periods. Whereas a primary reason for the change in ordinance to establish a maximum number of dogs involved or convoluted, protected or acrimoniously, acrimonious dispute regarding barking dogs, the council discussed a required condition which would revoke any approval upon the receipt of six barking dog plates, which would result in the requirement at one oh five East Adams Street, only having three dogs present. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council determined that, that the property at one oh five Adams may continue to have five dogs present until the death of least one, uh, at least two of the dogs, leaving only three dogs present for the following reasons and with the following conditions. Findings, five dogs were present at one oh five East Adams Street prior to the enacted uh, restriction limiting, limiting the dog, limiting the permitted dogs to three with the maximum number of four dogs. If approved by the city council after receipt of an application noticed in the compliance with the ordinance and then hearing on the six dash four A three additional dog permit application. Two, the applicants admitted the previous licensing and kennel license violation of the city ordinances. Three, three of the five dogs present at one oh five East Adams are of an advanced age being over 10 years or older. Four, one of the dogs present at one oh five East Adams is only physically present approximately maybe 36 hours to a week. Five, the applicants agreed to reduce the number of dogs at one oh five East Adams to no more than three upon the death of two of the present dogs and will not replace or acquire any additional dogs in excess of three dogs at one oh five East Adams Street. Six, the applicant agreed to continue using bark collars on the dogs when the applicants are not present at one oh five East Adams Street. Decision in order based upon the facts set forth in the recitals and the specific findings set forth herein, the Three Fork City Council decides and orders that five dogs may continue to reside at one oh five Adams Street contrary to, uh, six dash four A three additional dog permit. On the condition upon the death of any of the five dogs, the residents of one oh five shall not replace or increase the number of dogs above three. And in the event of the city, the city received six complaints about barking dogs at one oh five East Adams Street. The number of dogs at one oh five East Adams Street shall immediately be reduced to three and shall therefore, uh, be no more than two dogs present at one oh five East Adams Street. Counsel, is there any discussion? And, uh, is Susan? Do you have anything to say? Hello?
She has a really bad internet connection, so hold.
I don't have anything, whoa, there you go. I don't have anything to say. But I'll answer questions.
Do, does the council have any questions?
No.
No? Okay. We have anything from the public? Questions?
Yeah. Why do you guys go through all the trouble and make the ordinances if you're going to keep changing them? I would like to apply for six additional chickens, please. What's the difference?
Bring it to the council.
We will.
Thank you Gloria.
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, council, any questions? Do we have a motion? Make a motion, reapprove resolution four, four, one, dash twenty, twenty-five, for approving five of one oh five East Adams Street, Three Forks, Montana for more than four dogs.
I'll second.
And if you move and second, we'll have the vote. George?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Jean?
No.
Garrett?
Yes.
And Roxy?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I didn't vote, but I.
Yeah. I didn't see your name here. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yes. What did you vote?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Alrighty. That's done. Now our next item is a consideration, a decision on Tara Prosper's, uh, Prosper's, uh, application for an additional dog permit located at one twelve, Second Avenue East. And, uh, I will read your letter. And then we will look at our total person advice. This letter was written on June 18th, twenty twenty-five. This letter is to accompany an application for a kennel license at one twelve, Second Avenue East. My name is Garrett Prosper and I reside at this address with my three dollars. Alex Welch, twenty-two, Lauren Welch, eighteen, and Sydney, Prosper, thirteen. Together we have four dogs. Millie, a large mixed breed, age eleven. Gracie, a yellow lab, age six. Ole, a Cavalier, uh, King Charles Poodle mix, age three and a half, and Theo, a Corvy, age one and a half. I did not intend to own four dogs, however. My daughter, uh, Alexa, Alexis came home from college with dog, uh, Ole uh, last summer. Alexis has a letter from her psychiatrist allowing her to have Ole at the college, which with her as an emotional support animal. All our dogs have been spayed, neutered and are up to date with their vaccines. Our yard is fenced and we do not leave the dogs outside for an extended period of time. The dogs are never left outside at night and never if we are gone to work or away from home for long periods of time. There are no future plans to own four dogs at one time. This was just a situation that we were currently in with Alexa moving home. I would greatly appreciate you allowing this situation temporarily as our dogs are very loved and well taken care of. With the cost of housing, Alexis is, uh, unable to live on her own at this time. And I'm happy to have her and Ole here. Thank you for your consideration, Tara. And then we did have a home inspection from our code enforcement officer, Wally Ziegler. And, uh, it's referenced to one twelve, Second Avenue East, Three Forks, Montana. And one, uh, they're naming the dogs, uh, Millie, a large mixed dog, age eleven. Two, Gracie, yellow lab, age six. Three, Ole, a Cavalier, King Charles Poodle mix, uh, age three and a half. And Theo, a Corvy, age one and a half. Three Forks City Council. Uh, on July first, twenty twenty-five, I did a home inspection for an, an additional dog permit at the above property. My findings are listed below. Health and care of animals. All the animals appear to be in good health. Access to outdoor space. There is adequate outdoor space for all the dogs. Fencing. There is a fenced backyard. Odors and animal waste. There is no odor present and did not see excessive animal waste. Dog related complaints. There have been no dog related complaints received by the city or the sheriff's office. And recommended, I recommend the approval of the additional dog permit with conditions from the city council. Uh, council, do you have any questions about this? And then we'll have Tara. Would you like to speak first?
I just said everything in the letter.
The letter spoke.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, just a couple of questions. Uh, first being, um, how did you find out that we needed, that you needed an additional dog permit?
I got a letter. Cause I've lived out of town in a subdivision for a long time. So I kind of forgot about the dog rules.
And so that was a letter from the city?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And then, uh, second question, it mentions, uh, temporary for the, the condition. Do you have a rough, uh, guess on the temporary?
No, Alexis left college. She was back east and she came home, um, and at this time was working full time, trying to figure out what to do. Cause she kind of ran out of college money and my 18-year-old daughter is leaving three of them in August. And then the Corvys hers. So if she decides to get housing next year, um, she would take the Corvy with her. And I will not be replacing any dogs with more dogs.
Any other questions, council? Public? Charlie, she's going.
I'll speak as public. Um, I, my daughter used to watch Tara's dogs when she lived out of town and she had, well, she had three then. But you've got two of the three now and they are very well behaved. They run out free and you call them back. Those when they're in the country and they would come back with three calls. So the older two are very good dogs. Yeah, they were, they were good. I went out there, drove her and her out there so she could watch them and had no problems with them.
Counsel, do we have a motion on this? I'll make a motion, uh, to accept the application for an additional dog permit, uh, the applicant, uh, Terrence Burke.
I'll second.
As we move to second, uh, we'll have both then. George?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
And Roxy?
Yes.
Motion's passed. Thank you, Garrett. Okay, our next item uh, is a request for the city to include in their fiscal year, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget to H R D C towards programs that will help Three Forks residents such as the food bank, homelessness, low income energy assistance and gallivant rights. And Heather, uh, Grenier, would you please come up here and speak to it?
Yeah, I'll have some handouts. Is that okay?
Sure.
Hi, Heather.
Thanks for having me. I appreciate you making time on the agenda, your considerations. Want to give just a little background on, um, in our funding scenario and, um, why we are proteins local municipalities for support. We have long had support from the city boardman in Gallivan County. Uh, and some, some, um, Big Sky Resort area district as well, specific to housing developments and operations of our Big Sky. When we launched that initiative, um, as we, um, continue to respond to increasing, increasing need um, and, uh, storage of resources, uh, really since the onset of COVID, need has escalated. Um, resources initially were plentiful to respond to that increase in need. And since have really diminished significantly, um, we are seeing about a 20% increase in requests for services across all of our program areas, um, year over year. And trying to sustain that and make sure we can continue to show up for the community. So, um, part of our board governance, um, responsibility is fiduciary and we're working on a financial sustainability plan. We also get funding from the federal government, not directly, but we get contracts for services across a variety of programs. Um, that represents right now about 46% of our funding. Our goal is to get that down to about 33%, reduce that reliance on federal funding for a variety of reasons. Um, it used to be closer to about 75%. And we've been really proactive about over the last two decades to reduce that, diversify funding sources, um, and really increase philanthropy. We are already raising $4 million a year across our service area to support services we have on the ground. Um, one component of our financial sustainability plan, um, includes support from all our local government partners on to be able to continue to do that and invest in that. That also leverages some of the federal funding that we do have. A lot of federal funding we do access requires local match in particular, local match from local government, um, to be able to do this. So it also leverages dollars. The, the snapshot I have in front of you just shows over the last year in 2024, how many individuals, um, accessed services and how many household members that included across the Three Forks community. The number of services that were provided, um, average of services per individual and per household as well as the county comparison to showing of Three Forks people that we're serving, how many that represents of our overall customer base as an organization. It's about 2.6%. of Three Forks people that were serving, how many that represents of our overall customer base as an organization. It's about two point six percent. Um percentage of residents benefiting from services is a significant number for Three Forks that showing thirty-six point six percent. Three Forks residents are accessing services from HRDC. Um and the percentage of residents living below the poverty line is about six point seven. I share that because historically um pre-COVID, um most of the time when we looked at communities and the number of people accessing services and the percentage of people living below the poverty line, they were pretty um friends or meaning if people living in that community were about seven percent below poverty, we were probably serving about seven percent. This number is reflective of what we're seeing in every community we serve because the cost of living continues to grow and wages are not growing at that same pace. Um just ran numbers of the number of people we're serving that are employed and it's eighty-nine percent of the people that we're serving that are employed. Um eleven percent are in that unemployed market. So it's people are working hard and doing what they can. Um and we're just helping them fill a gap, whether that's a transportation gap, um a grocery budget gap, a little bit of a gap on their rent that we're helping them with, um a little bit of help with their winter heating bill if that's the gap. Um we just really try to fill those gaps to make sure that they maintain their housing and can continue being employed and being productive members um of the communities. The chart below that shows just our financial investment and the service delivery. So of those three thousand one hundred and thirty-five services, we look at everything as a cost per unit of service. That's what our actual cost is for the provision of those services. So that's the dollar amount. HRDC programs are investing in providing services in the Three Forks community and the chart of what category they fall in along that. That next chart shows partnerships and community engagement. We have seventeen local partners, forty-six local volunteers who have contributed over two thousand hours, which is about the equivalent of one full-time employee. So it's pretty significant. And the value of those volunteer hours is that investment. Um the back page shows the household member age breakdown just to show we're serving folks along at every age range, um under eighteen and over seventy and everything between and that percentage. And then there's some highlights there as far as the number of services, the variety of services accessed um from residents in Three Forks and then some highlights. And one that I think I'll draw attention to is that just of of all the households we served in Three Forks, ninety-one percent of them access our food bank services. Um the majority access that here specifically, but another thirty percent access that via our gout and like food making Bozeman and one percent via our Big Sky Food Bank, Big Sky. That historically just really is people access that where they're working and where those hours of operation are. So it really isn't preference. It's more um accessibility um and convenience. Um we helped seventy-six households reduce their energy bill. Average benefit for that is about six hundred dollars. Um and so that really is just to help offset their winter heating costs for um folks who are um living below the poverty line. We had eight um folks from Three Forks access our warming center for shelter. They averaged about sixteen nights per person. Um our average night, uh our average number of nights for most folks across our entire service for the warming centers about forty trees. This is a shorter stay. It shows it really was just a temporary need that was met with that shelter service. Um and then we also provided services to another twenty-five families between Paulie and Harrison. And we're capturing also in here what we're serving from the Clarkston area, um which is been a significant focus for us for our outreach. Um our governance structure includes representation from public, private and community representatives. Jean is on our board of directors and is the one of the appointments from Gallant County. So he's a designated representative for Gallant County on our board of directors. We also um employ some members here uh for relevant services. Um and our Headwaters area food bank has been on the ground since two thousand.
Eighty-two.
Yeah. Yeah. Um and um we have a local advisory council that supervises that as well um from members of Three Forks community. Um and that has been a remarkably successful program. It really is kind of help people. It's what's here on the ground, even though these other services are all accessed, that's their access point, right? They get connected through that. And then we visit with every family. We look at not just why are you here today, but what are the underlying things that we could maybe help address that help you get set up for success in the future? Um that's where we can add to the other variety of programs and services that we have. We um have new staff starting, kind of head advisor food maker started Bree Warren. Um joining will replace in Emily and so we're very excited about that. Um we also um are an active member in order of regional housing coalition. Many of you have attended those meetings or been part of that. Um there are committees that are working on distinct issues across the housing continuum. One of those is addressing homelessness in particular. Um and we have with that committee um adopted a regional strategy to address homelessness, which I have a few copies for if anyone would like, we'd be happy to send it and share it as well. I can leave those here. Um just shows the partners that are involved in that, the strategies we're deploying to really address homelessness. Um to give you a frame of reference in the drastic change in the number of people experiencing homelessness across the region. Um in year two thousand or two thousand and twenty or twenty twenty, sorry, I made a mistake. Um the number of people during the annual point in time count, which is how we measure how many people longitudinally over time are experiencing homelessness in a community or a region. Um that number was around a hundred and nine people. The two thousand and twenty-five point in time count was over five hundred people experiencing homelessness on a night in January um in our region. And so that number just continues to go and escalate at a pace that we can't keep um pace with that demand. Um so this subcommittee of the regional housing coalition is really working to coordinate a regional strategy and approach to address that um that benefits all the communities to think out as well. That's mostly what I wanted to share as well, but I also am happy to answer any questions um or expand further on any other information as well.
So I don't have any questions. Well, kind of. Um so I work at First Creveville. And so Emily and I worked together to put together a toy drive for the past couple of years. So I um work in Bozeman now, but I'm holding that with him still. Oh, make that happen here.
Great. Yes. Yeah, I know it's on the plane.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Um and the other thing is, um I spend a lot of time with the kids in the high school and recently um Emily was my son also too when I have the kids like touring the bank. I took him over to tour the food bank as well. And I think it was to me, it was really important. I know some of the kids really um some of them got more out of it than others, obviously, but I think it's so important for the kids to realize that this can happen to anybody, like anybody can use this and like it's for everyone. And if you are not in need of it at that time, it's great for you to be able to donate or spend time doing what you can for for your community. So hopefully I'll still be able to or somebody from the bank will be able to um keep that going because I think it's so important for the kids to get involved in the community and and learn about needs and that it's okay if you ever do need it. That's what it's there for.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, our data shows that typically, particularly for food bank services, the average household access services three or four times every lifetime, right? And then they get that gap assistance that they need and then they're fine. So it really is, you know, a temporary situation and normalizing that so people know it's there for a resource for everyone. It's important.
So I'm I'm
Other questions, council?
Just a quick question for Kelly, I guess. Um I am assuming we wouldn't be hurt by five thousand dollars.
When you talked about like thirty-six percent of your, I think it's Three Forks, is that Three Forks only or is that does that include Clarkston and maybe even Broadwater County?
Yeah.
Logan, you know, Sharon. Five nine seven five two.
Yeah, exactly. We so we pulled the numbers based on all the surroundings of codes, but the census data is a lot harder to pull in that same way. And so I think so I put an asterisk there because it's it's based on Three Forks population. So it it would probably be closer to twenty five percent, maybe thirty percent if we pulled in some of those outline contexts. Yep.
But the other thing that we should note, it's not the Three Forks area food bank. It's the uh Headwaters area food bank. And so, you know, being on there since the conception of it, uh you know, we've never turned down anybody and like you say, the Harrison Pony area has grown significantly in the last couple of years. We used to very seldom have anybody, but we also go as far as Manhattan and Churchill, Amsterdam, Logan, Clarkston and north of Three Forks now, which is just about as big as Three Forks. And so it serves a large area and, you know, the way we were structured before HRDC came in and took over the food bank, uh we would have been out of business. We couldn't keep going the way we were. And so there's uh no doubt about it. They prop up our food bank to keep it going and and if we didn't, uh it would be closed today. And so it's uh and the volunteers that we get at the food bank too just all aren't from Three Forks. We got people from Manhattan. We've had people from Churchill that were on our board. Sam Hoffman served for a number of years with us and so you know, it is something that services the whole area and even beyond. We we get people from Whitehall. We get people from Townsend. I seen the other day on our sheet, we had somebody from Azula. I don't know how they ended up over here, but so uh it does a lot of good for the community. And uh the other thing too that you know, if we do have a homeless uh situation in Three Forks, a lot of times they end up that they come to the food bank and then the food bank also directs people to the direction of in Bozeman where they can get additional help, not only to maybe a place to stay, but help with these other items that you mentioned, like with the Lea app for the electrical and whatever. And so the whole idea is is that we would really like to see people get back on their feet and keep going. And so and I think we're not we. I think the HRDC is very successful at it. So so I would really appreciate the council giving this some consideration. I did bring it up at the budget committee meeting about a month ago and that's why we asked Heather to come down and talk and and it's just not Three Forks. I know we're also doing Belgrade and other communities too and
I'd like to say one thing too. Um when I first started driving down there, I thought it'd be just for Three Forks, but we have patients in Willacris, Three Forks, Logan, Manhattan, and we're part of Belgrade now. And so, um yeah, dialysis patients, cancer patients. Uh I take them to eye and dental doctor appointments and I even have my swim team. So the dude approaches. So anyway, it's I didn't realize until I started driving how busy it was.
Sure. Um is it the time where we make motions? I'd like to make a motion to request the city include five thousand dollars in its fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget to the HRDC.
Hey, it's been moved to second it. And uh does the public have anything to say? Okay, then we'll have the vote. George?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Jean?
Upstate.
Ed?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
And Roxy. Motion's passed. Thank you. Happy to come.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay.
Did you get a member to the subcommittee?
Not yet.
Okay.
I think I think you're out.
She kind of slid that in there too. She was a subcommittee member on the homelessness.
I'm taking the homeless.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
Unhoused. There's nothing on.
Okay.
I was kind of wondering why it was changed from homeless to houseless.
Unhoused, I think. Yeah, there's a lot of people, you think a lot of things about what how we should call wording. Yes, yeah.
Okay, then uh thanks once again. And uh our next decision will be, and I'm gonna have Jean take this over, uh this is before the trail system. Uh we have a big document here. We don't have to read it, but it's uh it says here that uh approval of the mayor's signature on service contract to Acme Asphalt uh for one hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars to perform twenty twenty-five maintenance on Headwaters Trail System. And there's also pardon me.
First, it's the recommend accepting the recommendation of the engineer of those bids. So before you
Okay, okay. The decision of engineers recommendation to award twenty twenty-five crack seal and seal maintenance project for the Headwaters Trail System. Jean, would you like to say anything on this? No?
I'd like to say, yeah, we actually, uh I was surprised at the number of bidders we had. Uh most of the time we're lucky to have one or two and I think we ended up with four or five this time. Uh the bids were very competitive. We were uh thinking that the project, uh we'd put a price tag of about a hundred and ninety thousand on it. And we got a bid to come in at one thirty-six eight eighty. Um and so what that means that we'll do additional work, we will still try to well, we're definitely gonna spend all of our grant money, which is two hundred thousand dollars plus the match. And so all we'll do is just do more repair work and uh stuff to the trail system. And so if you forgot, uh there's gonna be a crack seal and seal code on this Jefferson Street Trail all the way to the school. Uh plus we'll do the one on Main Street that goes to the airport. And then we're gonna start over on Seventh Avenue and go as far as we can over there uh fixing the bad uh cracks and stuff that are just about curious if you're on a bicycle and uh and overlay a bunch of that. And that's the oldest hard bar trail. It was built in nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight, someplace, probably ninety-eight, ninety-nine, someplace in there. So uh very happy with the bids and uh Acme Asphalt uh has done two different jobs for me in the past. They also done some work too. They've done quite a bit of work in Three Forks, actually. They uh paved the Lutheran Church parking lot. Uh and then they done some small jobs around. They done the parking lot or the historical society at the depot. Done some driveways for people and stuff. So uh and we were curious about why the bid was so low and it was because he doesn't have any work and he said it's uh over in the Butte area, there's not a lot going on. And so uh I think that's why he sharpened his pencil. I thought it was unusual that the ones from Billings and Butte were the lowest and the ones from Bozeman were the highest. And uh so I was happy with the bids and hopefully I'll be happy with the work.
Okay, well, uh the first item was uh we have a motion to accept the recommendation for the crack seal and seal code maintenance project for the Headwaters Trail.
Make a motion. We accept the engineer's recommendation toward the twenty twenty-five crack and seal code maintenance project for the Headwaters Trail System.
Second it.
You've been moving second. We'll have both then. George?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Jean?
Upstate.
Ed?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
And Roxy?
Yes.
So our next item was approval of the ma- mayor's signature on service contract with Acme Asphalt for one hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight hours to perform twenty twenty-five maintenance on the trail system. And I think Jean, you brought all that up in your speech. Do I have a motion to accept uh the approval?
I'll make a motion to accept the approval of mayor's signature on service contract with Acme Acme Asphalt for one thirty-six eight eighty to perform the two thousand twenty-five maintenance on the Waters Trail System.
Second it. Then move to second. George?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Jean?
Jean.
Ed?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
And Roxy?
Yes.
Motion's passed. Our next item that we have, board appointments to the Board of Adjustments. Our board appointments for adjustments and appeals. Two vacancies exist on this board due to the term expiration of Richard Russell and Alex Blackburn. Both Richard and Alex wish to consider be reconsidered for another term. No new applications have been received. And these terms are for three years and will expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. And all the board vacancies are advertised on our website and our Facebook page. And notice our physical post posted at the post office, City Hall, and Three Forks, and the three banks in town. Do I have a motion to accept these? I make a motion that we approve Russ, Richard Russell and Alex Blackburn for the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Then move to second. We shall have the vote. George?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
And Roxy?
Yes.
Then I have another, to accept recommendations of the Three Forks Volunteer Fire Department for Chief and Assistant Chief. Says, dear Mr. Mayor and members of the city council on behalf of the Three Forks Volunteer Fire Department, I am writing to inform you of the results of our recent officers selection held in accordance with the department policies. The following individuals ran unopposed and were elected or reelected by membership to serve leadership positions listed below. Fire Chief Keith Honney, Assistant Fire Chief Charles Easty, and Secretary Summer Griffiths. Now, we respectfully request the mayor to appoint these individuals to these, their respective position, positions effective immediately. Each brings a valuable experience, dedication, and leadership to our department. And we are confident in their ability to continue strengthening our commitment to serving the community of Three Forks. Please let us know if any further documentation or action is needed to complete this process. Thank you for your continued support of the Three Forks Volunteer Fire Department. Sincerely, Charles Easty. Do I have a motion to accept Keith Honney, Charles Easty, and Summer Griffiths?
Make a motion to approve the results with Fire Chief, Fire Chief Assistant Fire Chief, and Secretary. Second.
Then move to second. We'll have the vote. George?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Garrett? And Roxy?
Yes.
Then I have.
You missed, I missed an agenda.
What did I miss now?
What about the sheriffs?
I voted yes too.
Geez. Time for me to go home.
So the sheriffs, the sheriffs interlocal, the interlocal agreement we have with the Galton County Sheriff's Office has a public safety committee, you know, that if they ever talk about discussion, negotiations, not, it doesn't have to be negotiations. We have a meeting that Wally scheduled last year and he wanted to do something either quarterly or semi-annually or annually. Just to, how's code of compliance going with the, how they discuss between the city and the sheriff actually, you know, sending tickets if that happens. So George has been that representative for years. And George is resigning at the end of this year when his term expires. And so I just want someone, we just want someone to think about who would want to be on it. We do have a meeting coming up that Wally scheduled and George is still coming to that. But just if anybody wants to think about it or volunteer now.
When is that meeting? It's coming up?
Um, August, is it August twenty-fifth? July twenty?
It's in August.
No, it's in August.
It's in August.
Yeah, it's in August.
Wally told me about good day.
On August sixth at ten AM. Which is a Wednesday. Jean, are you attending that too? Jean, you're attending?
Yeah, I told Wally I'd be there.
See, where is it?
It's here.
I'll go to that.
Okay.
You said what time?
Ten AM.
You do for a day off of work?
Crystal, I'm sorry about missing that. Okay. So we got that completed. Now. I do have, it says the council interest in budgeting forty thousand dollars towards the long-range transportation plan CDBG grant. And I have a letter. I did meet with these people here at the city office. And I'd like to, like to read this letter from Craig Erickson. Says, dear Mr. Johnston, thank you for meeting with Jessica Salo EE, Carl Yakowicz EE, and myself. June nineteenth at the city office. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss the funding and development of the long-range transportation plan or LRTP for the city of Three Forks. And LRPT was identified in the city's twenty twenty-five capital improvements plan, CIP, as planning, study needed to better understand and address transportation needs at Three Forks related to growth and safety. As mentioned in the LRTP, would be planning a tool, would be a planning tool for the city's consideration of holistic approach to transportation and not just a plan to pave streets. The following is a summary of our discussion. First of all, we reviewed the potential for funding the project in part with a community development law grant or CDBG. Planning grant for the Montana Department of Commerce. We reviewed the CDBG planning grant application guidelines, which confirmed that a transportation plan is eligible for CDBG funding. We also discussed the following criteria associated with the eligibility of the project. Any general public, any general community planning activity funded by CDBG should consider how activity will benefit low and moderate income people to the greatest extent possible. Secondly, I noted that the Montana CDBG programs give priority to projects that enhance the unique and resilient characteristics of the community by one, investing in healthy, safe, walkable downtown and neighborhoods. Two, encourages development and community revitalization that utilizes existing infrastructure and community service. And three, aligns with community long-range visions and goals. I mentioned that if the city is open to assessing the conditions of the, of its streets and improving accessibility by constructing sidewalks and crosswalks that can apply with American, Americans with the Disability Act or ADA. It would make a strong case for a fifty thousand dollar CDBG planning grant. To keep the cost of the profile affordable, it was decided that the focus of the LRPT would be in areas identified in figure six of the CIP, which generally includes the following areas, the two blocks on east, on the east side of Front Street, East Ivy Street, Taup Road, and Kid Road. The focus areas can be expanded based on direction from the city. I also mentioned the CDBG planning funds are extremely popular and historically the amount requested by applicants far exceeds the amount of available funding. Because of this, I firmly believe that the city's application must include several letters of support. In my twenty-six years of experience working with CDBG program, I have repeatedly seen projects that include several letters written by residents that include personal descriptions of why they support a project and how they see the project benefiting the slow and moderate income residents are ranked higher and they're therefore far more likely to receive funding. For this reason, I discourage the use of templates. The Department of Commerce has not yet announced when it will begin accepting applications for the application deadline. However, the commerce staff has indicated that the next application cycle will open this summer. I expect commerce to start accepting applications soon after the Fourth of July with a deadline in late July or early August. Typically, the grants are announced six to eight weeks after the application deadline. I have started to prepare the documents that must be included with a CDBG application including the following. Designation of a pyramidal certifying official and finding exempt activities. And I've already signed and sent them in. I sent each of these documents with this message. And so we sent them in and what we are looking at and what we discussed was, I talked with him about many things and he brought up for these grants Deer Lodge and Anaconda. And they filed for one of these through Great West and they got it. And they did, right now they're doing a bunch of sidewalk work over in Deer Lodge, but I know because they're doing some right in front of my grandson's house and lot. And also in Deer Lodge. So they were accepted. Another thing that Harrison, not so much streets or anything, but they had a aging wastewater system. And so they sent it out. It's going to be, it's going to be a lot of money to take care of this. And a young lady over there, Terry McParton, went around and got signature to have people write letters. And they are going to be almost fully funded for their wastewater project. So. I just thought I'd throw this out to the council, but I talked with Kelly on what we could do. And this was in our CIP for this year. And I'm throwing it back to you, the council. See what, it's just a planning stage. Like the gentleman said, Craig said that once this is in, like, we might not get it this year, but we could keep trying. And my, my feelings have always been is that we don't know unless we try, starting with this. We might get some funding. We might not. We might have to look towards SIDs, but it's a plan to make everything look nice. So council, do you have any questions?
So what is the forty thousand for? Like matching or just part of the project?
In the CIP, it says eighty thousand is the cost to do the transportation plan. And we're expecting us to get a forty thousand dollar grant.
Okay.
So that's the difference.
Randy, you said this, you just finished saying that this was in the planning stage right now. When would we, when would we be responsible for forty thousand dollars? Well, tonight, I would appreciate it if you guys would approve it so that we can start.
They, they would, we wouldn't start the actual project though until we had the other grant funding.
Right.
So if we got approved for the grant, then we would have.
If this is what we're trying to do, George, if you're. Where does the forty thousand dollars go? Until what time?
It stays in our account until they start the project of doing the transportation plan. And then when we start getting bills on the transportation plan after the grant has been approved, we'll pay part of it out of the grant, part of it out of the city funds. So nothing gets spent unless we get the grant. If we don't get the grant, we don't spend the money.
And, and what you'd be getting is along the plan. Basically, we have a water PDR, wastewater PDR. It's a transportation PDR.
So it's just kind of earmarking the funds while we, while we attempt to get the grant, against the grant, then it's hey, half off. I, I'm interested in moving forward on that.
Request? Make a motion? I'd make a motion to budget forty thousand dollars towards a long-range transportation grant plan.
Second. It has been moved to second. We'll have the vote. Ed, I'm going to say you first, right?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
And Roxy?
Yes.
Thank you. And what they said and what I read was, and I've, I've got to get with this gentleman is it's personal letters. Why, what you would want to see. Like it's, you know, anywhere from asphalt to sidewalks to everything. And I'm gonna, we're going to try to get some letters sent out to people that are in these areas too, so.
And the, you're talking about focus areas?
Yes.
Which is Kid Road, Ivy?
And it would be over on the west side of town too.
It's the whole.
It's the whole town. So like if you look at town, in the CIP, it lists it all, but I'm a visual person, so I think it's easier anymore. You know, some of the things in the CIP are like, into the broken spur. Where are you, right there, right there. And you come in and there's this. You can turn this way, this way, go behind over to the city shop, get back on the highway. You can go two different ways. You already get your railway. Maybe that needs a roundabout. Maybe over by when you come in, by the, by the post office and you come off on Front Street and there's, you know, two other streets coming in right there. Everybody is yielding who's going which way. That is another area that was identified in the CIP is maybe needs some sort of improvement. As, as well as paving sidewalks, things like that. All over town. So basically, once we will, so to apply for the grant, we need people to write letters, what they want. Could be school, could be, could be, you know, a walking path to the food bank. I mean, there isn't any sidewalks in that part area. The food bank has sidewalks and now the next neighbor does, but the rest of it's all disintegrated. So it could be something like that too. It could be all sorts of different, not just us personally writing letters, but various entities, the school, the chamber, whatever, the senior center, the trails. So who's like writing this grant? Great West is going to write the grant for us, but they would like us to gather the letters of support to include with the application. How will we do that? Say that again. Are we going to like put something out on Facebook? Or how do we like tell the wider public that we?
A lot of times we cold call people, email them, you know, like the ones at the school. I think for the council, if you have businesses in mind or that, you can have them call us. But if you start that process, or if you have neighbors that would like to see sidewalks or paved streets, you know, let them know we need letters to support and they can call here and they can tell them what we need and by when. So if you can plant the seeds of people you know that want paving, then we can kind of help direct them and give them a sample letter that they can change because they don't want formal letters. But if you can get the word out with people who know your groups and how, they can call us. But if they know that we need letters, then we can start with you guys. And then Crystal's really good about getting a lot of letters from people all over the chamber and all that. So we can work on stuff too. But if you guys can spread the word and get more people out there and different varieties of people.
Okay, well, thank you. All right. Council announcements. I have a few things on my list, but first of all, I received from our fire department. It says, dear, dear council and members of mayor, I appreciate the opportunity to provide an update for the current status of Three Forks Fire Department and to share summaries of the calls for service we've responded to this quarter. This report covers going, ongoing challenges within our department, a breakdown of incident types, some incident insight. And response for complexities. So this is for quarters one and two. And between one, one of twenty twenty-five and six thirty twenty twenty-five, the Three Forks Fire Department report responded to a total of ninety emergency calls. And the breakdown is follows. Forty-five EMS and rescue calls, four structured fires, seventeen wildland and car fires, two gas leaks, eight inch, eight service calls, fourteen false alarms. And the report and it says that basically looking ahead with another potentially busy fire season approaching, we are working hard to prepare our team and our community of public outreach and through incident planning and training. and, uh, pre-incident planning and training. Uh, equipment, I'd like to bring that up. Our team continues to make the most of what we have while bringing proactive in replacing and buying equipment. For example, we have continued need for updated proactive gear for the amount of nearby probationary fire, firefighters are being added each year. And I'd like to read the staffing and, uh, volunteer retention. Like many small departments, we have, are heavily dependent on our volunteer force. Maintaining a full-trained and active roster has proven increasingly difficult due to time demands and stress, stress of emergency service. With many of our volunteers working nine-to-five jobs, responses may be limited during key times. And equipment may not be ready staffed during the hours. Improvement and retention for this poses concerns going forward. Our current membership is nine firefighters and eight probationary firefighters and still doing, who are still doing basic training, a total of seventeen. So I, I asked Charles for this and I just want to thank them for what they've been doing. Volunteer, I know, uh, Jean still does the books for him, but he was on the fire department. I was on the fire department for ten years and it was, you know, being a volunteer, you, you were out there twenty-four seven. So anyway, I just want to thank our department and I want to thank, thank you for what they have done in the last, this last, uh, two quarters. Okay, then. Uh, I did, uh, meet with Travis Little, who is the, and Ed, Ed and I did meet with Travis Little. And, uh, he is the hydrologist, uh, for the state of Montana. We took him out to the culvert that runs under I ninety, the Madison I ninety interchange. And we looked at different options, but I, I didn't, he brought a map that was very interesting. He showed me that there was another culvert up above the one that flows underneath. And Jean, we went under there and it's fully cleared. He also showed me that, uh, if we, if we were to put in a culvert underneath a trail at a certain spot, it would have to be engineered that the water would flow to that area. Now, why did all this happen in the first place? First, the railroad came in. It used to flow naturally to the river. Then, uh, so they put in a culvert under the railroad, which brought it to that point. Then the interstate highway came in and they put in the culverts. And, uh, prior, uh, one of, there's a, Jean, there's a culvert there by, uh, your trail, by your mound that I didn't know about, you knew about. But, uh, all these culverts that are under there, and I did find out that that part of the trail for Jean's mound is all the way up. That's the old Yellowstone Trail according to the map.
Yeah, it's the old highway.
The old highway. And then the other side is the railroad. So basically, I'm waiting for a letter from, uh, Travis to let us know what, what should be done and how we're gonna work around this. But it was all okay until our railroad came in and, and a number of other things, but interstate, we're working on that. Okay, and, uh, then, this is my inner, but I'm gonna challenge each one of you. Uh, I have here, this is a, a library challenge. You don't even have to go to the library, but if you want to pick up one of these little cards like I did, where every hour you read, you fill out a book and you get to the end. And for each, uh, star that you get, the volunteer, our Three Forks Volunteer Fire Department will receive a dollar from Trident Plant, uh, sponsored by Trident Plant Security Bank, Manhattan Bank, Up to D Bank, and Costco. So even if you read the morning paper, if you read a magazine, but if you pick one of these up, fill, fill it out and give it to Jamie before, I think, August seventh, the money will go to volunteer fire department. Last year, it went to food bank. And, uh, also, uh, the library on August fifth, they are planning a ribbon cutting ceremony for the improvements that they have made for the new door lighting booth and everything that has been done down there. And it's put on by the chamber, Three Forks Chamber of Commerce.
What time's that, Randy?
That's a good question, it's still up in the air.
Okay.
So, anyway, I thought I'd share all these things. And, uh, does the council have any, any more announcements?
Got a couple on, uh, next week is our annual rodeo. Anybody that, you know, quite a celebration, uh, come down to it, whatever. And also the week after that is our annual Headwaters Bank Run. Uh, so I expect all of you to be signed up for the half marathon like, uh-
I am.
There it is.
I can run it, but I'm out of town that weekend. After training and everything. I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's all right.
So sorry.
But, uh, anyway, uh, appreciate anything that, you know, you can do or help out. We always need people for water stations or for help, so. Anyway, that's two things coming up.
Yeah, we do have one vacancy for a water station, don't we?
Well, I don't know for sure. Oh, that's my wife's job, not mine.
But anyway, yes, okay, any other? Okay, uh, that covers it, our agenda, uh, items for eight, twelve, two thousand twenty-five. We'll have a preliminary hearing on fiscal year, uh, uh, two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget. And Kelly, when do you think we should have a meeting?
Um, we can decide that later.
Later?
Yeah.
At the eighth?
No, I mean, we can get a hold of the budget committee, we don't have to set it tonight.
Yeah, okay.
I've got the FEMA review next week, so I gotta focus on that and we can talk about it.
Okay, and then we'll have a second reading on the ordinance that we read tonight for chapter six.
And we'll have some follow-up on, uh, your input on the board, like the water deposits. And see if there's any interest on the houselessness subcommittee for the regional housing.
Yeah. Randy, I'd like to say one thing, uh, this is, uh, I guess, uh, in defense of Kelly and the city crew who have to listen to everybody complain about the floodplain, uh, that, uh, when they tell them why we're doing what we're doing and they mentioned a hundred-year situation. Well, they just had a hundred-year situation in Texas.
Indeed, indeed.
And, uh, they had a wall of water twenty-six feet high.
Forty-five minutes.
Yeah, forty-five minutes. Now, I hope that never happens here, but I mean, even just to show you what can happen when you get Mother Nature decides she's gonna concentrate the rain and what happened? That area had been in a severe drought for a number of years and they said that the surrounding ground was just like asphalt. So the water did not, the rain did not sink in at all, it just all puddled and came down there. But I, I can't imagine a wall of water twenty-six feet high. Those people got devastated and I-
Two, two feet above the floodplain, they got cut.
Yeah. But I mean, the thing about this is, you know, everybody all goes, well, that's never gonna happen around here. You don't know.
It happened in ours every couple of years ago.
Yeah, and it does. But anyway, uh, hats off to you. I mean, I know you get a lot of static over insurance and floodplain stuff, but hopefully we'll be able to rectify a lot of that when we get this project done.
Okay.
Is there anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Speedy and his adjourn.
Actually, it's coming up.